It's nine o'clock. We're going to call a meeting order and we'll open up this morning with devotion by District Five.
Yes, sir. It's my privilege and honor to introduce one of the newest deacons for the Catholic Diocese of Biloxi from St. Joseph's Church in Moss Point. One of my oldest friends, Eric Denmark, Dinkin' Eric Denmark. Come on up, sir. Oh, no, come over. But you can talk to the crowd if you want to.
All right. Let us bow our heads and ask for God's blessings in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Heavenly Father, we come to you with thankful hearts for the opportunity to gather as a community to serve the people of Jackson County. Grant us wisdom beyond our own discernment in our decisions and a spirit of humility as we work together for the common good. We ask for your guidance to inform our deliberations with fairness, compassion, and integrity. Help us to listen attentively to every voice, especially those who are often unheard, and to speak with honesty, respect, and grace. Grant us unity amidst diversion, perspective, and remind us that our duties are not for personal praise but for the well-being and safety of all families of Jackson County. May our decisions bring peace, safety, and prosperity, and may we always seek the greater good above personal interests. We thank you for your provision, protection, and guidance. In your son's name, Jesus, we pray, amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Eric.
We appreciate it. Y'all were standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. That brings us down to amendments to the agenda. I don't have any. Mr. Morris?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Taylor?
I have an unofficial amendment to wish Supervisor Ross a happy birthday.
Oh, so that's good. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Ross?
I don't have any.
All right. Mr. Bossard?
None.
Mr. Eldridge?
None.
Mr. Fulton?
None.
Mr. O'Neill?
None.
Don't have any. Mr. Comer?
I have two under consent agenda board attorney item F that needs to be removed. That's actually a duplicate. So six F under board attorney, if you can remove that. And I have an executive session item with regard to the location or expansion of a business in Pasagoula.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other amendments?
I have two.
Go ahead.
Um, one, under the consent agenda, Chancery Clerk, a resolution authorizing Berry, Cumbus, the president to execute Bay Area Printing and Graphic Solutions Service Agreement. And then, under the Board of Supervisors' consent, a resolution authorizing Berry, Cumbus, the president, to execute Wright National Flood Insurance Company policy change. Uh, that's for 6904 Washington Avenue and 3108 Canty Street.
Thank you, ma'am. Is that it? Anyone else? All right. That's all. I'll entertain a motion approving amendments to the agenda. Have a motion by Mr. Morris.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ross. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Very good. That brings us down to general public comments. Is anyone here for general public comments this morning? Anyone for general public comments?
I just wanted to welcome our new grants project specialist, it's Chelsea Baker. Uh, this is her first time to attend a meeting, so I just wanted to get a feel for how everything works, so.
Well, very good. Thank you. It's good to have you. Anyone else? All right. That brings us down to consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended. Have a motion by Mr. Taylor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bossard. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. All right. That brings us down to department heads. Ms. Wells? You got there quick this morning.
Good morning. The first item I have is the order approving the claims packet.
I'll make that motion. I got a second by Mr. Morris. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no.
Okay. The last item is the resolution authorizing the interim loan for fiscal year September 30th of 2026.
Motion by Mr. Bossard.
Second by Mr. Taylor. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, come on. Melissa?
Yes. Good morning. The first item is discussion for our annual reinsurance renewal. Si Sterling with Gallagher Insurance, he did shop the rates and he shopped about 22 different carriers. And Gallagher's recommended option is to renew with Unity Re, um, which is who we currently have. And it will be a 3% increase, um, for another 12-month contract. There were some other options, but it was, I mean, they were all higher rates. So that is the recommended option from Gallagher Insurance.
Okay. Okay. Anybody have any questions? Brian, is it all at this?
Yeah, it looks good to me.
Okay.
We looked at a 15-month deal and to try to marry it up with some of the other things.
Right. We tried to align it with our other insurance renewals, but it was a 21% increase, so it just probably wasn't the best.
It was a good bit higher to do it that way, so.
Mm-hmm. Sure is.
This is the option that we wanted to go with. We need.
Um, I think you do need a vote.
We do need a motion. Right. Okay. Okay. All right. I'll make that motion.
I second.
Have a second by Mr. Morris. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Go ahead with your second.
Okay. Um, the second item is the confirmation of sold rates for HealthGram. And this is just laying out the two different options for the reinsurance renewal. Um, and now that you voted and chose the op, that first option, um, really all we have to do is circle the one we want and approve this confirmation of sold rates. It's just an updated confirmation of sold rates with the new reinsurance rates in it.
Okay.
But that's, um, I think that just probably, you probably don't need a motion for that. Well, you might, it's a cho, I think you do have to choose between.
Do we have something, is this something that Mr. Cumbus has to sign?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Let's make a motion for that.
Okay.
And if you can give us the two documents that we're looking at that we can attach to a quick order.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, if you could, just vote.
They are both in the, they should be in the, we uploaded them with the, um.
Yeah, they're in the board.
They're in the packet.
Right. I just want to make sure that, okay, would you, before we do it, we'll just make sure that we got the right documents and we're doing it correctly.
Okay.
You want to look at it first then before we vote?
No, I think, I, I've seen it. I've seen it. Um, I didn't study because I knew there was going to be a presentation, but, and you all will handle it, but let's have a motion on the, on the.
Confirmation.
On the confirmation of sold rates, yes.
Okay. Could I get a motion on the confirmation of sold rates? Have a motion by Mr. Ross?
Second.
Morris, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. That cleans it up.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Tracy, come on.
Yes, sir. I've got three today. Um, first one is a resolution, rescinding a resolution, uh, from July 21st, 2025, on the transfer of Canine Marcos.
Okay. Have a motion by Mr. Bossard. I'll second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no.
And the second one is also on Marcos. We're making a resolution authorizing the removal of Canine Marcos from inventory to retirement.
I'll move.
Have a motion by Mr. Taylor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Morris. All those in favor say aye. So is Marcos going with the handler or is he still going to? I was going to ask.
He's going with a handler, but I believe it possibly is a different handler. Uh, the information says that it's with Sergeant Jonathan Landry.
Okay.
So he's taking Marcos.
So we're, we're, he's going to keep him for retirement instead of us transferring him to the MDOC?
Yeah, the vet deemed him, um, not healthy enough to go.
Okay.
Right. If y'all remember, there was a, he was going to be transferred to MDOC, then I think, uh, the, uh, the dog sustained an injury of some type, went to the vet. The vet was of the opinion that the dog wasn't capable of, of serving anymore. Uh, and, and, and so that's why we rescinded the resolution to transfer to MDOC. And to answer Mr. Bossard's question, yes, I think the handler, A handler is, has decided to keep Marcos.
Okay. All right.
Okay. And then I.
Hang on just a second.
I'm sorry.
Could I get a, uh, have a motion in a second? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. All right. Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay. Now I have a resolution declaring Ford F-150 a surplus property, and we're going to donate it, want to donate it to Moss Point School District.
All right.
So move.
Have a motion by Mr. Morris. Did you second, Mr., second by Mr. Bossard? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Marcus? Good morning.
The item I have before you is our Plan and Commission recommendations for September.
All right. I'll make that motion.
I'll second with a question. Uh, how many new subdivisions were approved, uh, last month?
Hmm, I don't have that number, but we're, we're steady approving them.
So what's our count? I was asked this the other day and I've been meaning to get an update on it. Are we going to be over 400 new residential permits issued this year like we were last year?
I would think so.
Okay.
I can send you that information.
And that's just in the unincorporated part of the county.
That's right.
So that's the question I keep getting asked is, what's our average building, new residential building permit issuance?
Yeah.
So we're over 400 still?
Yeah, we've been about 500 the past five years, right?
Okay. All right. So over 500. All right. Thanks.
Thank you, Marcus. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Thank you. Next up is a civil service appeal here, but that's at 10 o'clock. We're just going to skip over it and come back to it. Uh, we have a presentation, the MacBus, Tawana McFarland. I was expecting you to come in here with Big Macs or something.
How's everyone doing this morning?
Doing good. You all right?
My name is Henry McFarland. I am the CEO of the MacBus, and this is my wife, Tawana McFarland. I'm originally from Hattiesburg, Mississippi, born and raised there. My dad was a civil rights activist who, uh, developed a lot of the things that we're actually using today in the, uh, in the South. And my wife originally is Tawana brought naps from born and raised in Moss Point, Mississippi.
Okay.
All right. And basically what we're providing, we have what we call the MacBus. The MacBus is a community-based, uh, means of transportation. Our ultimate goal is provide safe transportation as well as dependable transportation to those who need to get to work, to get to medical, to get to any service home, uh, the stores, anything of that nature. And we want to provide that for Jackson County. Basically, we've already been a big impact. We've provided a, uh, service for the 2025 Humminbird, um, festival out of Pasagoula. We, uh, took passengers, uh, Moss Point, I'm sorry. Uh, we took passengers back and forth from the parking area as well as those that needed medical, uh, just, they had disabilities. Uh, we also were, uh, requested to assist with the Moss Point 2025 Homecoming. Um, it was all about getting people back and forth from, um, their locations and making it home safely with no DUIs or any type of offenses of that nature, and we were pretty successful. Uh, we've also been requested for a lot of the, uh, community activities that we needed, that we are needed for, uh, um, the city and, um, as well as Moss Point. And basically what we're seeking at this moment is assistance in sustainability. We found that there is a huge need. We provide for Escataba, Moss Point, Pasagoula, as well as Goshay. We're doing fixed routes. Those fixed routes at the moment, with minimum advertising, a couple of flyers, our goal is to get to seven riders per hour. At the moment, like I said, with minimum advertisement, a couple of flyers, um, we're getting close. But what we've found is that the sustainability of this program is a little difficult. So we're reaching out to the board because we really don't know, uh, as far as, uh, any grants or anything that's out there that's available for us to maintain and sustain this, uh, program. We also provide what we call a Road to Home program. That's a program for, uh, people who are in prison, and we allow, we provide the families opportunities to go visit as well. What that has done is decreased a lot of the anxiety that's in jails. Uh, it's allowed a lot of the prisoners to actually calm down a little bit because they have something to look forward to because of their good behavior. So what we've done is made a huge impact within the community, and we want to continue to do that as well. And so we're reaching out to the board for any assistance and sustainability of that that we may not know of.
And we know that, um, currently CTA does the fixed routes for the Jackson County area. Uh, however, we know that those service route, those fixed routes are just not being serviced due to funding. So what we have did as a small business is we, we have a shuttle bus, and it's 28 passengers, uh, insured and everything. So we do plan to, uh, collect the data because we think in, uh, some years back, it was reported that there's low ridership. Uh, we did a feasibility study and found that that's, that wasn't true. We think it was the, where the routes were, so they were kind of inefficient, so you couldn't get good data. But now we are trying to get that data so that we can show the Board of Supervisors as well as, um, CTA, as well as the cities, that there is a dire need for transportation, and we're here to support or partner, however we need to. Um, we are originally, as my husband said, from Mississippi, but we live in Virginia, but we're relocating to this area. And when we, uh, bought our home here in Moss Point, we realized that the transportation was, it was a small city but hard to get around in this small, big city. So, uh, once we were there and we seen that this is an easy problem to solve, of course, when we dived into it, it wasn't so easy. Uh, but we do think that this is a service that all of Jackson County could benefit from.
There are a lot of transportation needs in Jackson County for sure. Uh, community action does provide some transportation services for seniors. You probably know about that. Um, there may be some transportation needs that, that we may have through mental health or some other things where we might need, you know, some services there. Uh, otherwise, um, you know, if we can't contract for services, then, then it would be more like a, uh, sponsorship or some type of advertising county resources or some kind of funding that we would have to provide. And, and I don't know without having a local and private if we could actually just give them funds.
Well, I was wondering about that. I knew there's some requirements they would have to meet, didn't there, Brian?
Are you guys a nonprofit or are you a small business?
Yeah, it's a dual entity. It's a nonprofit and for-profit. So under the MacBus is our nonprofit. What we're planning to do, the grants is for seniors, uh, all of the underserved, disabled, everyone. Uh, for our, for, uh, the transporter is our for-profit. That's where the actual vehicles sit under just because we didn't want any, um, anything to hold that up. So the buses, the shuttles sit under a different entity, but it's dual entity. So yes, we could be the provider, um, or it could be CTA, but we do understand that that 20% match is a, is an issue, uh, not just for Jackson County, it's for everyone. So, um, we've just been coming to the table to kind of figure out that piece to help with the 20%. Um, but just to give you an idea, with the, if, if even the 25,000, if it was a 25,000 match, that would get you $100,000. So it's, right now, what we, it looks like on transportation is just not planned in there. And as you said, there are different providers there for seniors, but you have to be registered in those programs. And we know all seniors may not need those services. They still need a ride. So we, we think that to, to solve this, we know that it wasn't planned in the budget, we're just asking going forward in the budget if we could just start thinking about transportation and how to make this sustainable. Because even the grants, that's a great way to get started, but it's just not sustainable. And I think that we can find sustainable solutions. Um, I know that Ms. Nienette Barrios, who's the director of CTA, uh, spoke and mentioned millage. That is an option to use millage to fund transportation. But I think we just gotta talk about it because Jackson County does not have, we, we don't see the transportation line. And we just trying to, we want to get a line, and we just want to help the community. We're, we're a very small business that just seen a problem that we think we can solve.
Would this be something that SNPDD could help?
Well, they're, they're the ones that fund the community action transportation piece. So it may be good to have a, a bigger meeting and have some, some more of the transportation providers all in the same, same room to kind of figure out where those gaps are. Because there is some shortfalls in, in the transportation piece for sure. Um, I know CTA doesn't go to somebody's house and pick them up. They're, they're more the fixed route stuff, and a lot of people can't get to the point where they can be picked up by CTA. Um, so there are some gaps. It'd probably be better, good to have a, a bigger meeting and try to get all those providers in one room and try to figure out where the gaps are.
And I think that's an awesome idea. We're actually trying, working with, uh, that, for the Amtrak too, to try to pick those people up and get them moving. Um, and then also if we could all come to the table because it's so much, it, it would take all of us at the table to kind of figure this, these gaps out. But I think it's a, it's, it, we want to be at the table to help figure this out. We think this is a problem we can.
I heard you did a good, uh, job at the Humminbird event, uh, last Saturday.
Yes.
Talking about you got, that's the first time I hear, MacBus.
Y'all just have one vehicle right now?
We only have one shuttle, but we're already sourcing for more because, um, we're, the cert, the biz, the, is here. We, we know, and, and then it's coastal, so everybody wants to move along the, the, the corridors, so we just want to help.
Try to take that on and try to schedule a meeting and see if we can get some people together.
Yeah, let's try it and see. Yeah. Sounds like a good idea.
And then also a support letter. If we could get, just to say, we're here to support a support letter that it would help us to gather those funding, the funds as well, if, if, uh, Jackson County supervisors would do that.
If you work with me and try to help us draft something like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't mind helping, but it, you know, it's certain loopholes we have to watch and go through, you know? And, uh, but we don't mind helping. Sound like something we may can help with, we're just going to have to start.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, one, one instance we got is the new CSU, like when those patients are being released, they don't have a way to get to their home. So, uh, you know, we, we've got issues there, but I'm not sure that we would need a 20-person bus.
Yeah, so it won't all be, we, we have a 28 passenger, but because there are CDL issues, drivers, we are going to go smaller so we can get, we don't have to be dependent on a CDL driver. But Mr. Eldre, Eldridge, also we have a, um, we, we think that we have a clever way of getting routes. Just like you said, a person that has to go back to their home. We created an app called A-List Ride. You put your address in there and we add it to the route because we are trying to get a sustainable fixed route. You put your address in there and we make it a part of the route, and then when we go to make permanent routes, we'll have all of those addresses and we can create a, a, a more efficient route. So that is one way we, we try to figure that out.
I'd be interested to see if there was a way CTA could contract them to operate in, like, East Jackson County. And then that way you wouldn't have two groups, you'd have one group. Because CTA, the reason they don't come way over here is because that's a lot of empty space that they'd be traveling across with nobody in it to service another area. But if there's a way they could contract with y'all on this side, that could, that could be feasible if, if they can. I don't know if they can.
And we, we talked to them about that. I think that one of the issue, it still comes back to funding. They did not have the funding to contract us out, uh, because we are, we want to partner with them because we think that bringing from Escataba, Goshay, Pasagoula, Moss Point to meet them at Ocean Springs to get, you know, get the residents over to Harrison County if they want to go. So we, that's a great idea. It's just a funding issue still.
I'm thinking Gulf Regional Planning Commission maybe getting them, you know, because they have the, they, they help funnel the funding through to CTA.
And CTA gets massive federal dollars for every local dollar. They get it straight from the FTA and.
But we can't collect on those because of that, that match. That has been really one of the biggest challenges.
You'd have to have a local match to, to get the federal dollars.
Yeah, and they turn that, all that money in because we're not able to come up with the local match.
Okay.
So that's one of the, that's the biggest challenge. They get all that, those mon, that money, but we can't pour down on it without.
That almost seems to me like a way that you could do a CTA on this side of, of our county, do them by creating a local match for Pasagoula or Moss Point or whatever area you're doing, or for Jackson County as a whole. And then that way you've got a bus service over here too without having to re, you know, duplicate or increase the size of CTA. So I mean, I, I'd be interested enough if you do that.
Yep.
All right. Okay. Let us keep looking and talking, and we'll, maybe we can get something put together.
Okay. Well, thank y'all so much for your time.
Thank y'all, Mr. Ross. We appreciate it. Uh, brings us down to action items. Brian, you have anything on the state?
Just a couple of quick things. On the state, uh, side, we are compiling our information together for our tidlins and Go Mesa request and trying to get all that in one, uh, a one-page document for, um, to get started with the legislative session in January. I met with, uh, Manning on that last week and discussed that. Also working on our local and private for the fair board. Um, that's something that came from our new fair board, uh, some recommendations for changes in the local and private, and we've, uh, put that in a document. I've sent it to Legal and they reviewed it and they're okay with it. And got back with Manning on that last week. Um, he had a lot of questions on it. We've got those answers. And he's got to be meeting with Manley to try to see if he may be the sponsor for that bill. So that's just a couple of updates on the state side.
Okay.
And nothing on the federal, other than the government's shutdown, so.
That means we can't do anything.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Uh, that brings us down to supervisor items. I didn't have anything. Mr. Morris?
I didn't have anything.
Mr. Taylor?
No, sir.
Mr. Ross?
Nothing.
All right. Mr. Bossard? Okay. That brings us down to closed session. Oh, y'all are going into closed session and come back at 10? Me as well. We got 30 minutes.
I think it'd be fine.
Yeah.
I think there's two, two items on executive session agenda. Acquisition of property by, uh, Mr. O'Neill in the road department, and then the, um, location expansion of a business in Pasagoula that I need to, uh, discuss briefly.
Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session for those two items.
I'll move. Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Taylor, a second by Mr. Morris. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank y'all. Close, opposed, no. Thank y'all.
All right, it is 10:00. And we have a civil service appeal hearing.
Before, before.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead Stephanie, I'm sorry.
There was no action taken in executive session?
Thank you ma'am. We all ready?
Jimmy, let me get set up.
Yeah, one second.
All right, as I said a while ago, it's 10:00 a.m. and we have a civil service appeal hearing this morning. Mr. Comer, are you going to sort of lead things off?
Let me explain what's we're going to do today. There was an appointment made by District Two Supervisor. He recommended Jimmy Lee Wilson, Jr., be appointed to serve on the Jackson County Civil Service Commission. That recommendation was approved by the Board of Supervisors on June 20, 2022. So roughly three years and a few months ago, he was appointed to the commission by unanimous vote of this board. Some issues have apparently arisen. And Supervisor Morris wanted to have a hearing for this board to determine the appropriateness of the removal of Mr. Wilson from the Civil Service Commission. The law, local and private, does provide the following. Any member of the commission may be removed from office for incompetency, incompetence, dereliction of duty, or other good cause by the Board of Supervisors. However, no member shall be removed until charges have been preferred in writing and a full hearing had before the Board of Supervisors. Any member being removed shall have a right of appeal to the Circuit Court of Jackson County anytime within 30 days thereafter and may demand a jury trial. Such trial shall be confined to the determination of whether the order of removal made by the Board of Supervisors was or was not made in good faith and for cause. I had written Mr. Wilson a letter on September 5, 2025, at his address of 5060 Bellwood Circle in Moss Point, notifying him of the hearing that would be held today. And pursuant to the local and private bill, I put in the letter, which I have distributed to the board, the quote "charges" against him. And I put those in writing. In the letter, I put the official charges, and that's obviously not criminal charges. The official charges being brought against you are unavailability, failure to communicate, inability to work effectively with others to meet the requirements of the role of Civil Service Commission member, and lack of accountability. With regard solely to the issues that Supervisor Morris has brought up, again, namely, as I understand it, unavailability, failure to communicate, are the two reasons that are really driving this. The Board of Supervisors is entitled to make any comments or ask any questions that they wish. So nobody's going to be cut off, but we I understand it, unavailability, failure to communicate are the two reasons that are really driving this. The Board of Supervisors is entitled to make any comments or ask any questions that they, that they wish. So nobody's gonna be cut off, but we need to stick to the issues and not get to issues that are irrelevant. And then at the end, the board, in order to remove anybody from the Civil Service Commission, today specifically, Mr. Wilson, will require three of the five of you to vote to do so, after a motion, obviously. So with that being said, again, I'll ask Mr. Morris if he can kind of succinctly go through the lack of communication issue. Let me preface that by saying, as Board Attorney, that this Board of Supervisors, as any Board of Supervisors preceding this board, appoints a number of people to various boards across the county, quite a number of boards. The big ones are probably the Hospital Board, Airport Board, the Port Authority Board, Civil Service Board, it's no different than these other boards. And all these boards work independent to a certain extent. And I say independent, independent of the Board of Supervisors to a certain extent. However, the Board of Supervisors are the elected leaders of the county. And ultimately, the, these boards are ultimately the responsibility of the Board of Supervisors through their various appointments. And the Board of Supervisors, I will say, relies on communication from the various members. The easiest example of that is Mr. Fulton, Brian Fulton, who was appointed by this board to the Hospital Board, and who regularly updates this board on what's going on at the hospital. So this board will know how things are going, what needs to be done, are they on track, are they off track, things such as that. So it's the same for all five of you gentlemen, and the various appointments that are made to the various bodies. So with that being said, Mr. Morris, first, let me, let me attach these, if I can give these to the court reporter, attach the resolution that appointed Mr. Wilson on June twenty, twenty twenty-two, as well as my September five, twenty twenty-five letter to Mr. Wilson, advising of this hearing, in conformity with the law. The one that's making sure that the hearing proceeds, but any supervisor can ask any questions, can jump in with any comments, just like Mr. Wilson and his, and his witnesses can do. But from June of twenty twenty-two, that's three years plus a few months ago when he was appointed, up until very recently, can you explain to this board what attempts you've made to, to contact him, to discuss the Civil Service Commission, and what success you've had doing that?
Well, my situation is, we've been here forty-six months, no communication, have seen him out places, no communication, invited him to Christmas dinner, no communication. Recently, I called him and asked him to resign, because I, you know, I lost compatibility in him. So two weeks ago, he said, I'll call you back, okay? No call back. So I gave him another couple of weeks, and my second assistant called. He tell her he wasn't stepping down, he wasn't resigning. I think I deserve a call back from.
Before two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, whenever it was, for the three years and a handful of months, has he ever been by your office to discuss the status of workings of the Civil Service Commission?
No.
Has he called you for those three years and handful of months, did he ever update you with regard to the status of what's going on with the Civil Service Commission?
No.
Have you tried to call him during that three-year period?
Well, like I said, I talked to him at Christmas time, because I had most of my appointees out to Christmas dinner. I think he came to one of them, and the rest of them, no communication.
Have you, have you ever had any, in three years and a handful of months, ever had any discussions of any sort with regard to the Civil Service Commission, how it's operating, what's going on, are there any problems, is it operating well, any substantive discussions at all?
None.
Now, Mr. Morris, you appoint other individuals to other boards, or at least make recommendations, ultimately, it's this, this board that votes on who to appoint to the various boards, which you make various recommendations, such as Hospital Board, Port Authority Board, Airport Authority Board, plus, plus a long list of others. Can you explain to the board your discussions in general, I guess, if any, that you have had with other appointees to other boards, Hospital Board, Port Authority Board, Airport Board?
Yes, I'll just give you an example too. Last Friday, I had just talked to my last Port Authority Board appointee, and with last year, we had a groundbreaking content, well, you know, for the airport. My appointee, he made sure I was invited there, but I already knew I was supposed to come there. So I always have communication with them, even with the Fair Board. With the Fair Board, it's the smaller board, I went out about four months ago, and make sure they had SOPs done up for this year's fair, because everybody didn't know their assignments at the fairground. So I had SOPs made up to make sure they know where they're supposed to work at. So I'm into Election Commission, Election Commission last Wednesday. So I'm, I'm, I'm there with my people in District Two, I'm up with my boards. People elected me to make sure everything is going right, and that's my job, and that's what I do.
Do you regularly have conversations with Airport Board, Member Rec Board, Fair Board, Hospital Board, Port Authority Board?
Right. Right.
Do you speak regularly with your, with your appointees?
Every, every month.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Morris, that, that you can think of as far as the total lack of communication?
I just, I guess it's compatibility, you know, we just don't, I guess, I don't know what it is. I just, I thought I was a good person to talk to, a great supervisor, but I guess I'm not.
Okay. Anybody else on the, on this board want to say anything at the moment? All right, Mr. Wilson here?
Here. Morning, everyone. I hate the circumstances of the day. However, I have to face this head-on. I've been incredibly shocked and taken aback by Supervisor Morris's statements today, being that it was never a requirement, nor was it ever a request, for me to call him, what did you say, monthly?
Well, not monthly, just talk.
Mm-hmm. So I have to ask you, Supervisor Morris, in, let's say, the last year, how many times have you called me?
None.
Okay. That is not the truth. And I want everybody to, if you would, take a look at this. Should be enough for the court reporter as well. Once it comes all the way, makes its way all the way around, I do believe it will be enough for her as well. I, uh. Morris says that he's not talked to me within a year, but he has talked to me within a year. In fact, we've seen each other out, that is true. Not once has he asked or requested of me any news whatsoever about what's happening with the Civil Service Board, any news whatsoever. He seemed actually incredibly disinterested. I guess my assumption would be that maybe he's too busy, or he has other things going on, or that he trusted me to do what it is that I was appointed to do. However, as you can see, there are phone calls there on what it is that you guys are looking at. Now, this is the only time that I've had a phone call from Mr. Morris in the last year. You see that the office has called me, he himself has called me. And so I hope that you don't mind, because I am a preacher, and so I don't want to get off on the tangent, if I read a statement, if that's okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, thank you. So on July the sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, Supervisor Morris called me on my personal line, okay? In that call, he told me that he wanted to put someone else in my position as Civil Service Commissioner. Now, naturally, I asked why. Had I done something wrong, had I failed to meet a standard I wasn't aware of? A straight no was given, okay? Instead of the conversation going into, you know, specifics as to why, he wondered about into random topics. For example, he asked me about my parents, he asked me about my church, even my god sister, who he is apparently the uncle of. But no explanation as to why I should be removed from this office. So then again, I asked him directly, why am I being told to resign? His response was, and I quote, "Well, you've been with me for thirty months, I want to put somebody else in that position." I asked Supervisor Morris, well, is this something that's normal if thirty months was the limit? And he never clarified. He just spun more conversation into the loop, never answering my question. Instead, he told me, after I asked him for paperwork, that there was no paperwork, no process, just, and I quote, "Send me an email saying that you resigned, and to make it effective immediately." That struck me as improper. Because I was confused, not getting any clarity from Supervisor Morris, I called one of my fellow commissioners, Mr. Kendall Cuthbertts, who's present today. He did indeed confirm what I suspected. A single supervisor cannot legally force a resignation from a Civil Service Commissioner. Only this board present here today has the authority to even open such a discussion, and even then, only for proper cause. Well, the next day, July seventeenth, I followed up with HR, and I left in my information, and a call was returned to me. And what was told to me, true or not, what was told to me is that April second, twenty twenty-eight was the day that my appointment ends. That means that as of today, I have nearly three years remaining in this lawful appointment. Despite that, Supervisor Morris called me again on July the thirtieth. That call, which is transcribed, I will have you know, shows continued pressure. He told me, if I ask you to resign, you should resign. I put you on the board. He also claimed my time was almost up. I corrected him. My time is not almost up according to HR, they confirmed that. He did indeed say that he would consult with his lawyer. A third call came August the twenty-fifth. This time, he asked, when would I be available to meet with the board? And, you know, that's where we are here today, my concern, ladies and gentlemen. Term of office. I've been told that my term of office ends April the second, twenty twenty-eight, and that he is not able to, as a single supervisor, pressure me to resign, which he did try that. Second, authority of removal, Mississippi law makes it clear that removal of a Civil Service Commissioner requires calls, due process, and actions of the full board. He did not try that at first, this is something recent that he is doing. Voluntary resignation, I had not given him that. Misrepresentation, I was told incorrectly that my time was almost up, that was not true, HR did confirm otherwise. Abuse of authority, that is troubling. Asking me to resign so somebody else can have a chance, is what he has stated, is not a cause under the law. That is not good governance, it is arbitrary, it undermines the independence of this position. Ethical standards. Under Mississippi's Ethics in Government Act, officials are prohibited from using their office to secure unwarranted advantages, pressuring an independent commissioner to step down without cause in order to appoint someone else, and this raises serious ethical concerns. I can't even begin to tell you all how this has angered me, and in some cases, stressed me. So I want to be clear, this has not, until recently, been a legal matter, it has been deeply personal at the beginning. These repeated calls have left me confused, a little anxious, even dreading to see Supervisor Morris's number come across my phone. At no time had I been accused of any misconduct, at no time had I failed any of my duties, and Mr. Cuthbertts can testify to that. At no time have I been given a single piece of paper until I got your letter, sir, alleging any wrongdoing, outlining any proper process of removal. Instead, I was just subjected to pressure, misdirection, and intimidation. Please, ladies and gentlemen, I stand here before you today, an imperfect man. However, these things that I have been accused of, the letter that I received to my residence, are all false. I have been accountable. I think that one probably stung the most. Being a pastor for the last fourteen years, accountability is my life. I shudder at the thought that something like this could be brought against me by someone who I know, who we have spoken. I wouldn't say that we have the closest personal relationship, but I, I thought that I knew Mr. Morris. So I really don't understand why this is. But the last phone call concerning my position, and why he wanted to have me removed, left me deeply, deeply disturbed. And I do have a transcript of that phone call. If you all would like to view it, I have it available.
Excuse me, who the last person you talked to?
Could you give a little context to that question, please?
Who the last person you talked to? Who the last person you talked to in my office?
In your office?
Right. Did my assistant call you?
Uh, the last person that I remember talking to is you, Mr. Morris.
Nope. My assistant, you didn't, my assistant didn't call you? A week didn't call you?
And say what, I'm sorry?
Asked you to talk to me, and you told her you wasn't going to resign?
That, no, I never said I wouldn't talk to you. I told her that I would not be sending an email that you requested, no paperwork, just an email saying that I resigned.
And you left that part out.
And that, no, no, it's. And that, no, no, it's here. That was, uh, July the 30th, I believe it is. Yeah, it was July the 30th. Uh, I got a phone call, and they asked me, "Would I be resigning?" And I said, "No." But that, of course, is because I knew that from our July the 16th conversation, you were trying to snow me on something. I wasn't sure, asked to why, but when I was asking you direct questions, you did not answer my questions directly. And so we ended up, uh, in a phone call after I told your assistant that I would not be, uh, sending any email resigning because I found out that what you told me was not in fact true.
And I haven't talked to you since then.
Now, what I have here is a letter stating, and I know that you read it earlier, but I do want to, uh, make this statement again, that, uh, I am being accused of unavailability, failure to communicate, inability to work effectively with others, uh, as a Civil Service Commissioner, lack of accountability. And then it goes on to say, uh, amongst others. Not one time in that conversation, after your assistant called me and then you called me after that, did you make any of these references that I have here from your turn.
I hadn't talked to you since then. My assistant called you, and I just told you, when I told you that, my lawyer was going to call you. I hadn't talked to you since then, so you just told one just...
No, I did not. The July the 30th...
Since a TIA called you, and I didn't answer.
July the 30th was that phone call.
When the last time I talked to you?
And I have this phone call here. Bear you the embarrassment of playing the audio today to show everybody that's here who respects you that you lie openly and unapologetically.
We're not, we're not going to get into somebody lying. You said you're a pastor?
I did, sir.
Okay, so let's, let's don't go there. Let's stick with the issues. The issues are not what's happened since July 16, 2025.
Okay, what are the issues?
And nobody's accused you of improper conduct, right? My letter was simply sent pursuant to the law.
Yes, sir.
And, and what, whatever Mr. Morris may have said, I get questions from all five supervisors, from Mr. Eldridge, from Mr. Fulton, on what is the law on this or that? That's my job to tell them and to advise them what's the law. So when Mr. Morris brought this up, I told him what, what the law is, what the law says. The appointment by this board in, in 2022, as a matter of public record, it was a six-year term.
Okay.
You know, and it's in the resolution that the court reporter has. So, a, a six-year term is a six-year term subject to removal for cause, right? The, the issue, the issue, uh, is not what's happened since July 16, 2025 through today, and whatever phone calls that, that you and, and Mr. Morris may have had. The issue that was laid out is from June 2022 through July 16, 2025, uh, the, as I understand it, and, and I'm just the attorney for the board, is the total lack of communication that you've had with your appointing board, specifically Supervisor Morris. Uh, I understand that, that these supervisors are basically responsible for a lot of boards, and, and they don't have time to, to go communicate with all the different boards. They, they expect the boards to communicate with them what's going on. You were appointed by this board for the Civil Service Commission, and the only way this board is going to know what's going on is through the appointments, letting them know what's going on. So, for three, for three years, as I understand it, there's been a three-year, uh, gap in any communication with Supervisor Morris or this board from the appointment, you, you, and that's, that's, that's really the issue, not...
Yes, sir.
Not, not the tit-for-tat that may have happened since July of this year.
Attorney Coleman, I, I do understand that, sir. And I'm, I'm standing here to tell you that I've listened, I sat here and I listened to, uh, Supervisor Morris say that he invited me to a Christmas dinner, and that I did not show up to his Christmas dinner. Sir, I am telling you as I stand here that that is not the truth.
Okay.
I put that on my pastoral ordination.
So I'm a Christian, and he came to...
And so I will tell you that there was one time that I was invited to a breakfast. It was after his reelection. We went to Cracker Barrel together. Not once did he ask me a single question about the Civil Service Board, other than, "How are things going?" "They're going fine, sir. Great, you're doing a great job." That is what he told me.
For, for the sake of the board, and I don't have a vote, for the sake of the board, they may have some questions. During this three-year time, have you ever been to his office or called him to say, "Let me update you about the Civil Service Commission"?
No, sir, I have not. It was never a, uh, it was never asked of me to do that, and it was never given to me as a requirement when I was appointed to this position. And we discussed it, and we talked about it. He said, "Well, I just want to put you in this position." He said, "I trust you, you know, you're a good person." And so I said, "Okay, Mr. Morris." I said, "That's, you know, no problem, I'd be glad to do that." But never once was it discussed. In fact, I went in not really knowing exactly what it was about. I learned that from Mr. Kendall Cuthberts. Everything that I was supposed to learn, everything that I was supposed to do, and not once, uh, was it requested of me, not even when I would see him out, uh, of course, we're both public figures. And I would see him, I would greet him, and it never came up, not even once. That strikes me as peculiar, being that it's something that he desired or expected, or something that I was supposed to do, and I was not educated on that, uh, by Mr. Morris.
Did you ever feel any obligation to update Mr. Morris or the board on the Civil Service Commission?
Never once, because for the most part, and Mr. Cuthberts, he can come at any moment that he desires, there hadn't been really any news. In fact, I was just in the office with, uh, Sheriff Ledbetter, and he even made the statement himself, you know, "We try to take it easy on you guys and make sure that, uh, if you guys have any business, that, uh, it's something that's really serious." And as of late, there hadn't been anything very serious or anything pressing that I should update Mr. Morris about. Uh, but if there was, I could assure you that in spite of the fact that Mr. Morris had not asked me, had not required it, I would have updated him.
So just, just to help me here, this is a transcript of y'all's phone call. How do you get a transcript of a phone call?
There's an app.
Okay, so you have an app that records your phone?
Transcripts.
Okay. So you always do that, or was it just because of...
It was after the July 16th conversation where I knew that Mr. Morris was trying to, in my eyes, mislead me in a way. And so after that, I knew that I could no longer trust anything that he had said because what he said, I felt was wrong, and it was conflicting from what Mr. Cuthberts shared with me. I looked up, looked it up. It's also not proper for him to try and pressure me or press me to resign. And then I called HR, and they let me know that I did have a lot more time than what Mr. Morris was leading me to believe that I had. I no longer had any trust in him, and I knew that this would eventually become a legal matter, and that I would need to protect myself some type of way from things like today, things that he said that are not true.
Well, I thought it was a four-year term, but it's a six-year term, okay? I've been here 46 months. That's what I thought it was. That's why I thought it was a short term left. That's why I was asking you that.
Well, sir, you should have asked someone before you called me to make those types of statements.
And to be fair to Mr. Morris on that, I think almost everything we have is four years. This may be the only six-year appointment tonight.
I didn't know it was six years until I looked it up. Most appointments are all four years.
Maybe, maybe, maybe. But when I did ask Mr. Morris to clarify, he did not, again, like I said, it was a lot of toss about conversation concerning things that had nothing to do with the Civil Service Commission, which is surprising, being that today, he's saying that I don't talk to him about it. But in our conversation, he asked me about everything else under the, under the sun, but told me that, again, as you're reading, that, uh, uh, in our second conversation concerning this matter, that he just wanted to put somebody else in there. Never once did the things that you put in your letter, uh...
Well, just being in a professional way to tell you that way, okay? That's what I did. Then, like I say, we've been, I've been in office four to six months. I didn't know it was a six-year term, and I thought you still had, would have four months left, if you were to...
Mr. Morris, what would you define as professional? Asking me about my church, my parents, my god sister, or answering the questions that I was asking you concerning being Civil Service Commissioner, the time that I had left, and the proper way, I asked you the proper way as to which this should go, and you told me, "Just send you an email." And I asked you for paperwork, you denied me that, sir.
And did you send me an email?
I did not, sir, because I was not going to resign, because the email that you asked me for was a resignation, and I was not sending you a resignation email.
How many weeks I give you to call me?
One, one at a time.
Well, how many weeks I give him to call me?
There was never an answer called.
Court reporter can't...
Hold on.
Court reporter can't listen to but one person at a time.
Indeed. My apologies.
Yeah, one at a time.
You have the floor, Mr. Morris?
No, go ahead. Like I told you, I just misunderstood. I thought it was a four-year term.
I was specifically asked for a resignation email. If I am not resigning, why would I send an email if I'm not resigning?
Well, should you give me a call back and tell me?
You never asked for any phone call. Sir, why would I call you back concerning this matter, knowing that you had already told me, because I can't say lie as a pastor now, a distruth?
But did you call me back after the email?
Why would I call you, Mr. Morris?
Did you call me back after the TIA called you?
Why would I call you back, Mr. Morris? You, you, why would I call you back concerning this matter?
So I didn't deserve a call back?
No, sir, not after that. Not after that. Absolutely not, sir.
That's all I got to say.
No, not, not after, uh, what you've done and what you've accused me of and all, and come on. Call back, sir.
Next thing I'm going to ask you, he sends this guy here down here to, to tell me what I need to do with you guys.
Just, just a minute. There, there does seem to be an incompatibility issue.
It is.
You know, no, no question, no question about that. Um, but let, let me ask this first, going in, in order, other supervisors, if you have any questions or thoughts or, or comments.
Yeah, I was going to ask a couple of questions. How many times do you speculate you just told Mr. Morris that he's lying, he's lying right now?
How many times did I speculate? Probably five or six.
Probably five or six. Would Jimmy just mention the word incompatibility? Do you think that you two are incompatible with each other, and that you are refusing to have any accountability, uh, to him? You just said you're not going to talk to him anymore.
No, sir, that is not the statement that I made. I said, "You didn't deserve a call back concerning that matter."
That's the impression that you're giving.
Oh, I didn't mean to give that impression.
To me, I see nothing but incompatibility and, uh, and the lack of accountability, and, you know, I, I don't know why we need to go too much further.
August the 30th was the last time that me and, uh, Mr. Morris had a conversation concerning this, but again, I did answer the phone call that he gave me on August the 26th, which would absolutely dispel that, sir, even though we had had a back and forth about this position. I did answer his phone call, which is why I'm actually here today, because he asked me to come in September. I came. My family came, and then we were pushed away, uh, to a later date, which would be today. And so, of course, I have been open to answering this phone call August the 26th that you have before you would prove that to be true, sir. Mr. Cuthberts, please.
For you who don't know me, I'm Kendall Cruthers. I'm chairman of the Civil Service Board. I have have absolutely high regards for Mr. Wilson. He's answered or returned phone calls to me every time there's been a, a phone call made. Anytime that he's going to be out of town for any length of time, such as missionary trips he's been on, he has communicated that to me so that if we schedule a, a meeting, we can schedule around his missionary trips. ...so that he can require me to answer the phone or make phone calls on his behalf. The stifling that we get for being on the Civil Service Board does not have that line item. I'm not sure if legally the board can require us to answer our phones.
You can be legally required to answer your phone? Question never been asked in my 40 years of practicing law. I've got no idea. I would think that practically you'd answer your phone, but legally, I don't know.
I mean, you realize, like, he's not being accused of anything wrong. He, to me, it sounds like by listening to these two, that there is an incompatibility issue, and I don't know what caused it or why it's going on, but we're not, no one's saying you don't show up, no one's saying you don't do what you're supposed to do, no one's saying that you were bad at doing what you did. I'm not hearing that, but I'm hearing a friction that, to me, is one of the items, incompatibility, and that, that starts to concern me with that.
As far as on the board functioning as a Civil Service Commissioner, there has been no incompatibility there, which leads me to believe that the, this could be resolved by getting these two gentlemen in a room and let them talk it out.
I think, I think it, my take, and this is just my take, the, the, I'm talking bigger picture here, is the issue that I see, uh, from, from the county's perspective, the board's perspective, is with all these boards, if they're not kept abreast of what's going on, something, times, things get off the tracks, and, and then you got a problem that you've got to fix, and that's happened in the past, uh, where you got to fix issues because the board wasn't kept abreast of what was going on. I work with, with Mr. Fulton, Mr. Eldridge, best I can to understand what's going on in the county, bring things to the supervisor's attention that we know of, help them with their job, but at the end of the day, the, these five gentlemen have to know what's going on, on a lot of these boards and entities, and when they don't, and things start drifting off track, that typically happens because of lack of communication. The communication issue is, is really the only thing that, that has been presented, uh, as far as the issue for the three years that he's been on the board and the lack of communication with Mr., with Mr. Morris. Again, nobody's accusing him of, of doing anything wrong, so to speak, or nobody's accusing him of, of anything that, that he may be doing wrong during the Civil Service Commission meetings. Uh, but if none of the members of all these boards that, that are appointed by the supervisors ever communicated with supervisors, we would have a tough, we'd have a tough problem here in the county.
Yeah, these, these boards are so important, the jobs that y'all do, uh, all the appointments for the, the hospital board, the port authority board, the airport board, the fair board, the jobs y'all do. I mean, uh, but, you know, there's a responsibility on this board, right? Because you're dealing with public funds and public responsibilities, is, is this board to kind of hold everybody accountable? Well, if they can't communicate, I don't know how that happens. Like, I'm, I'm sure you communicate, I believe, Mr. Ross's point. Uh, I mean, we all want what's best for the county and the taxpayers and overall, um, so there's got to be communication of some sort, whether it's phone calls or emails or, you know, I mean, and if y'all have a request that, hey, how do we formally do that, then, you know, then that can be worked through. But, you know, I think this is the first instance I've seen where just two, just for some reason or another, just don't have the ability to communicate with each other.
I do have a question, um, being that you spoke recently about practicality concerning phone calls as opposed to the law. Uh, do you, would, would you say, um, that it would be practical that before calling someone and telling them that you would like to remove them for whatever reason, do you think that if there was an incompatibility or what have you, that there should be some phone call before we arrived to that point to at least discuss it or to give, uh, someone fair warning that they've, uh, not done their job or, uh, have disappointed you, and, you know, you would hope for better? Would that not be practical to do? Or is it just always directly to cutting them off?
Well, in fairness, I think, I think y'all was clear that Mr. Morris thought it was a four-year term, and, you know, nobody's guaranteed to be reappointed, right? And so I think there was just some conversation, and it got off the tracks real quick because he thought your term was in, and he was going to put somebody on new. That offended you, right? And, and, you know, and then people start going opposite directions.
Can I ask you, uh, Supervisor Eldridge?
I'm a Chancery clerk, I don't have...
Oh, Chancery clerk, Eldridge, I'm sorry. My eyes aren't as good as they used to be. I'm still young, but they're fading. By 40... By 40, I'll be wearing glasses, maybe. Um, but I, I, I have to wonder if it's, if he thought that it was only four years and that my time was almost up, why the rush without the explanation that I received from uh Attorney Coleman? Yeah, the, the rush, resign, your time is almost up. Well, if my time is almost up, why not just let me finish out the fourth year that you're saying that you assumed he thought uh was almost at an end?
Well, a lot of my, a lot of my people was getting off the boards right now, right now. I'm putting two new people on the board right now. Matter of fact, we're on planning board right now. And it, it, his time wasn't up neither, but.
Okay.
Mr. Morris, did you ever try to call me to find out what was going on?
I don't know you from Jack. I don't even know you. First time I saw you, when you came in here and talked to Troy to tell me what I need to do.
Well, my, my thought was you should call, if you can't get in touch with one of the commissioners, call the chairman of the, the board and see if he can get in touch with it.
We may be getting a little bit
See, that's what I'm trying to say, I don't need to call him, but I need to call him for
This is not about removing Mr. Morris. This is about removing Mr. Wilson.
Well, I understand that too. But I was just asking to know if he ever tried to contact any of the other commissioners.
Well, I'm saying that's not material.
Well, he certainly never contacted me to let me know that he had any issues outside of the conversations that you see here on your paper.
If your time, if your time was already, you know, say you were three months out and the, the time was going to end, would you be upset if he was, said, hey, I'm not reappointing you?
No, I wouldn't be upset. No, it's a principle thing. It's a principle thing.
It's up to the five board members. Nobody else had any questions, comments, thoughts? I'll, I'll say this, I think, I think for whatever reason, debate that, that there has been a three-year gap of communication.
Okay.
Why it's happened, whose, whose fault is it? I think we all agree that, that, that three years and there's been no communication about the Civil Service Commission.
Please, sir, let's not say no communication because uh we did have uh contact since then in person in the three years, sir.
Right, but contact, but discussion about the Civil Service
Christmas dinner.
Okay. About the Civil Service Commission and the operations of the Civil Service Commission.
I, I did, uh, we did speak very briefly about it at the, what he's calling Christmas dinner. There was a breakfast after he was reelected. Uh, and I had been appointed since then and we did briefly discuss it. I told him that things were going well, he was fine with that. And so, again, uh, seeing him in person and us briefly greeting, having brief conversation, uh, it never come, came up. He didn't seem concerned. Uh, and forgive me if uh that translated to me as full trust.
Do, do other, other Civil Service Commission board members uh talk to supervisors? Art Ocean Springs, I'm down from Sonic Lodge and we run into each other across the street. But, I mean, it's as far as they specify, we have to call every month, every quarter. That, that is not in anywhere
This is interesting.
Communicated.
I, I don't, I don't, right, and there, there's no requirement across any of the boards for that, but just you, you say you, you talk to uh Mr. Ross about the Civil Service Commission. Of course, you're the chairman, but you talk to Mr. Ross about the Civil Service Commission.
Yes. Communication there.
Right, there was never of, of, an official standard set.
I mean, that's what, when you make an appointment, it's kind of like the supervisor usually appoints someone who reflects the attitude and the personality kind of of the supervisor. And so they find a way to mesh that and they find out what's adequate for us to move forward in this relationship with you being on that board and me being on this board. And if they don't find that way to mesh like that, that's when the appointments are just not, they're, they're difficult appointments at that point. But I mean, so it's not like you say, hey, these are, this is how we're doing it. It's kind of you individually develop that relationship with each other.
What's interesting to me, sir, is the fact that before July 16th, we never had an issue. We never had a run-in. We never had an argument. No one had ever even so much as raised their voice at each other. So uh like this is all new for you all. This is actually all new for me as well concerning Supervisor Morris. Never had an issue before, ever. In fact, uh, the July 16th conversation was pretty well friendly, confusing, but friendly.
First of all, people voted me to be a supervisor and I have to talk to people in a professional way. So that's why I'm talking to you that way. I don't come as, come sending, I don't come, I just, I'm the boss, I'm the business. But people voted for me to be supervisor and I, I, I try to lead in the right direction. I don't discriminate against nobody. I'm just here to make it work for the county.
Well, that's, that's good to hear, Supervisor Morris. I'm not so sure if I would agree that uh our conversation on July the 30th would match up with what you just shared, but
Okay.
I do appreciate that, thank you.
Well, I'm going to get her going. I will make a motion that pursuant to that local and private law that uh we dismiss Mr. Wilson basically for incompatibility and lack of accountability to uh the supervisor that appointed him. Listen, you have been dismissed.
Thank you so much, thank you everyone. Thank you for your time.
We might see him again.
Yeah, I guess we would.
Insert E. Gordon. We could have done that in 30 minutes or 10. Before us, is it?
No, no, we're, we're, we're done, we're done with the hearing. We'll prepare an appropriate order.
Okay, sounds good. All right, I'll make a motion that we recess until October the 20th at 9:00 a.m. Second, my Mr. Ross, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. All right, thank you, fellas.